This meeting is ordered. Roll call, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon? Mrs. Huskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Cunkel?
Yes.
Dr. Wobblin?
Here. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
Under the board's approval, the agenda is presented.
Motion, Ms. Huskins, second by Mr. Ayers, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I will need an approval for an executive session.
Under the board's approval, the closed session is provided in Section 21.51I of the opening meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose performance is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation as that individual has requested a closed session. Second?
Motion, Ms. Huskins, second by Ms. Brockman, that the board hold a closed session as provided in Section 21.51I of the opening meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose performance is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to the individual's reputation as that individual has requested a closed session. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Huskins?
Yes.
Mrs. Cunkel?
Yes.
Dr. Wobblin?
Yes. Vision statement. It is a vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state, not in some things, but in everything. And not for some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guest this morning, or this evening. If you would like to address the board regarding a non-agenda item, this would be your opportunity to do so. Okay, if you would please come up and just say your name and your capacity within the district.
My name is Keith Stein, parent in the district. I'd like to address the board on a recent law change that's happened in Iowa. We've got some slides. Can I hand it to you guys?
Yep.
Are you going to pass them around? There you go. There you go. Sorry. Recent the state of Iowa has passed a nondiscrimination and indoctrination law. The law talks about, excuse me, I'm a little nervous here. Each school district may continue training that fosters a workplace learning environment. However, the superintendent of each school district shall ensure that any curriculum or mandatory staff or student training provided by an employee of the school, district, or by a contractor hired by the school district does not teach, advocate, encourage, promote, or act upon specific stereotyping and scapegoating towards others based on democratic group membership or identity. Also, each school district shall prohibit its employees from discriminating against students or employees by political ideology or characteristics protected under the Federal Suburbance Act of 1964. There was a slide presentation in American Lit class a few weeks ago. There were six slides, and it was part of a bigger discussion on the American dream. Slide number five, I'd like to draw your attention to, shows that the American dream is unattainable basically unless you're white. I'm sorry, I have a problem with that. None of the slides discuss how the American work ethic is to the American dream. One I had on a different slide showing like Elon Musk leaving South America to come to America, to South Africa to come to America, to change the world. When I learned of this, I reached out to the school district to include the school, board, and the school. I had one board member respond and say, "Check with this principal." Mr. Struse called me the next morning, was very cordial and understanding, said he would get Mr. Erickson. I then heard from Mr. Erickson. He did look into this. He told me it was a nonpartisan part of a bigger discussion, and this was meant to promote discussion. First off, I'm asking, don't need an answer right now. Why the need not to tell us it was nonpartisan? Why is it even being political? What type of discussion? That we have oppressors versus the oppressed? Look at slide number five, if I could draw any other conclusion. That slide bases someone's outcome in life based on the melanin content of their skin. Is this what we're teaching? Pitting one group against another? Based on the color of their skin? This right here is soft bigotry of low expectations. The course is American Lit, and they're using political cartoons to put seeds of doubt in students that cannot make it in this great country. That if you have a certain melanin content in your skin, you'll be able to make it, just based on that. Slide three shows the American dream is not possible if people around the world are trying to come here. I've had students in this district that have had her tell me that students in her class are graded differently based on their gender or their political beliefs. I've been told if you're a male athlete, that's two strikes against you. One student bragged that they made it seem like they were a liberal on the paper they wrote, and they got a good grade. I contacted the school last year about social media posts about this teacher. I also contacted the board, and was told by many this is not tolerated. I was told this is a tribal internal matter, and I would not be able to know the specifics of the outcome. I'm wondering if I need to file a request to see, because I don't think things are changing in this classroom. This teacher is seen on YouTube video with another teacher saying that the white male is the most dangerous person in society. With this new bill, does this type of teaching meet the guidelines? One of the other bills discusses, and was signed in the law, establishing a charter schools without the blessing of the district. We keep having teachers like this and parents feeling disenfranchised because nobody seems to care. We will have someone start a charter school in our great district? In closing, the slide presentation teaches students to be victims. The slides do not show what work ethic does for students later in life. My children have not been handed anything and have worked for everything they have earned. Again, the lesson is sowing seeds of discontent and pitting one group of students against the other. The American dream is alive. We should celebrate it. We, as parents, in a partnership with this school district, are here to make the next generation of great Americans. Shouldn't we be striving for excellence? Thank you.
So, as you know, this is not a topic on our discussion today. We are not going to be able to comment or say anything about it. But if somebody wants to bring this up, or wants to bring it up as a formal discussion, then we will certainly bring it back at another meeting.
Okay.
We are aware of the bill that was signed by Kim Reynolds, I think it was last week. And I know that Mr. Struse is aware of it as well. Okay. Or is there anybody else here who has any comments or anything they want to say on a non-agenda item? Okay, Ms. Anderson?
I have nothing.
Mr. Ayers? Ms. Cunkel? Ms. Brockman?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Lewis?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Mr. Zimmer, are you going to, you want to do it now or later? After I'm done?
It's going to be the cameras, though.
Okay. Wonderful.
As you know, at this time of year, it is time of celebration. And both not only in athletics, but also in athletics. I would like to draw your attention to the success rate that we had again this year for students achieving the SEAL by literacy, which was established a couple of years ago by our state legislation. This year, eighty-six tests were given, seventy-seven in Spanish and six in French. We had an eighty-eight percent pass rate with seventy-three students earning that illiteracy SEAL out of the eighty-six that took it. We had one student that earned both two SEALs in Spanish and French. So, up to this point in time, with the fourteen seniors that passed this year, and then it was added to the sixty-five seniors that took it last year, in the last two years, we've had seventy-nine students achieve this illiteracy SEAL, which is indicated on their diploma also. So, again, I would share that with you. We had seniorie ratios here, kind of going over that last year with us.
Yes.
Again, congratulations there. Now, on the sports scene. In the spring, there are seven athletic endeavors that go on: boys' and girls' track, boys' and girls' soccer, boys' and girls' tennis, and girls' golf. This year, those seven spring sports, we had five MAC champions: girls' track and field, girls' soccer, boy's soccer, girls' golf, and boys' tennis. And then we had two MAC runner-up: boys' tennis, and boys' track, and girls' tennis. At the next level, you'll see two of the trophies at the table by Director Cunkel. We had runner-ups in girls' track and field at the state championship, and also girls' state golf runner-up. Also, the boys' tennis team placed third. And then we are quarterfinalists in girls' soccer. And we also had medal winners, individual medal winners, in girls' golf, track and field, tennis, boys' track and field, boys' tennis. At the time of this, I did not have any indication yet on the boys' soccer. But I think the last group here, that Coach Ward is going to introduce us to, is our very first Boys' State Soccer Championship. Oh, Ward, come on up.
I would introduce them individually, but there's too many algorithms. Some of them are now working or on vacation. But in the substate practice roster, there was twenty-eight boys. In the overall program, there was forty boys, and every one of them contributed to this win. Along with the two assistants coaches at the back, and along with the community and the whole school and everything, right? I think, you know, traveling home on the bus was an interesting two and a half hours, right? What happens on the bus stays on the bus, right? And then being met by the police, thankfully this time for all good reasons, and being escorted into town, and all of the effort that was put on at the stadium just has made it an unreal week and unreal experience. Apologies for not bringing the trophy. Two reasons: one is I continue to sleep with it. And secondly, we don't know the protocol, right? Because this is the first time that it's happened. So, when we come back next year, we'll find it again. I'll bring both trophies next year, okay? All right, thanks again.
I think actually if each one of the soccer players could stand up and just give their name, what grade they're in, so that we can at least acknowledge you. Whoever wants to start on your end there?
I'm Alex Hunter, and I'm going to be a senior.
I'm Ryan Graham, and I'm going to be a junior.
I'm Carter Spado, and I'm going to be a junior.
I'm Jessica Anker, and I'm going to be a junior.
I'm Jacob Cox, I'm going to be a junior.
I'm Leslie Wobblin, I'm going to be a sophomore.
I'm Bruce Warren, I'm going to be a senior.
I'm Jack Thompson, I just graduated.
I'm Aidan Turner, I'm going to be a senior.
I'm Dylan Olindeich, and I'm going to be a senior.
I'm Justin Aslan, I'm going to be a senior.
I'm Brady Hunter, I'm going to be a senior.
Colin Meyer, I'm also going to be a senior.
Dan Brunner, I'm going to be a senior.
Jack Gilsham, I'm going to be a junior.
Ray Simmons, going to be a junior.
You guys are going to line, I'm going to be a sophomore.
Evan Ward, I'm going to be a sophomore.
So, I'm going to be a senior.
I'm Jack Romer, I just graduated.
And I'm Andrew Piotta, I'm an assistant coach, head of the first softball group as well. And I've been in a wing for four years now together.
And then I'm Adam Kuni, I'm the goalie's coach. And this was my second, but first actual year.
Wonderful.
You know, guys, what an accomplishment. I mean, to go into state tournament for the first time, they have the experience you did. You know, soccer's one of those sports where the ball can bounce one way, or something can happen right around the goal so quickly. You know, I think the real testament is your semifinal game. Just the way, you know, looking at how you guys stuck together as a team was impressive. And then to come out and dominate, you know, just how you did it, one-zero scores every single time, that is just impressive. And you played some teams that could really put some points on the scoreboard also. So, great job as a team. You know, Gabe's not here with you guys tonight also, but again, he had a great season as well in the net for you guys. So, great work to help him on the defense side, the offensive side, you guys really came together. I guess a question has anyone who can answer. Do you feel like there was a point in your season where you thought, "Boy, we can really do something here? We have a special opportunity here"? Did you feel like all year, you were headed that direction?
I think it was after the substate final game, when we finally broke the curse of not winning in the substate final. And then, once we kind of like got together and we were like, "This is our year." You know, the first year going to state, you've got to make the most of it.
Congratulations. You know, there's definitely pressure on you moving forward. As you went through, a lot of you guys are still young individuals, seniors, juniors, some sophomores yet. Bodes well for next year, hopefully. But don't rest on what you have here before you today. Make sure you step up the challenge, work super hard in the offseason, stay close together, because in soccer, you need that teamwork. And it's you guys coming together that can hopefully bring back a second tournament trophy to us next year. But, coaches, phenomenal job. Thanks for leading this young group of men to be successful. Guys, this is something you'll remember for the rest of your life. These are memories that, when you come back, five, ten, fifteen years of class reunions, you remember these things. So, be proud of what you accomplished. You've done very well for the community. We're very, very proud of you. So, thank you. Or remember seeing us.
No, just congratulations again. And we expect to see you next year. All right, well, thank you very much.
You do not have to say the rest of this for me. If you'd like to leave now, you are more than welcome. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Pinnings, with anything from you?
I have nothing.
Okay, Ms. Damon?
There is an updated personnel listing in your packet.
Okay, and Mr. Struse?
No, I cannot top that, so.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and go through the consent agenda. Are there questions on this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion, Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Cunkel, to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, approval of the bill, general fund.
I move that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $578,351.09 in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Brockman, that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nutrition fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $103,247.09 in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Ms. Cunkel, second by Ms. Anderson, that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Elementary, junior, high activity fund.
I move that elementary, junior, high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $16,637.18 in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Ms. Huskins, second by Ms. Brockman, that the elementary, junior, high activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? High school activity fund?
I move that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $41,352.05 in payment of invoices presented.
Motion, Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Huskins, that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Management fund?
I move that management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $2,000.00 in payment of invoices presented.
Motion, Ms. Brockman, second by Ms. Cunkel, that the management fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Capital products fund?
I move that capital products fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $461,800.47 in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Ms. Cunkel, second by Mr. Ayers, that the capital projects fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Papal fund?
I move that papal fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $8,673.40 in payment of invoices presented.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Brockman, that the papal fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Debt service fund?
I move that debt service fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $1,036,274.07. Sorry, I had to go back to math class.
Take a second? Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Ayers, that the debt service fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Internal service fund?
I move that internal service fund warrants from sixty-two thirty-seven through sixty-two forty-three be issued in the total amount of $61,786.05 in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Ms. Huskins, that the internal service fund warrants from sixty-two thirty-seven through sixty-two forty-three be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And then the trust fund?
I move that trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $7,46.17 in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Anderson, that the trust fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. There is no old business, so moving on to new business, we have the discipline reports that Mr. Zimmer is going to start talking about?
Yes, thank you. So, before I turn this over to Ms. Dixon and Mr. Paget, this is an opportunity in which we oftentimes ask some of our support personnel or assistant principals, deans, to appear before you so you have a chance to actually meet some of them for the first time, or not very often. So, our school resource officer, junior court liaison, so on and so forth. Also, I'd like to point out some history behind this, and that is, if the presentation includes any data that goes back and either supports or causes us to have second thoughts about something that the building principals or deans would ask the board to implement. So, for example, over the last twenty years, I'll give you some situations that we've asked. Implementation of cameras. We would say, "Okay," we'd come before the board, ask, "Hey, this is a safety and security thing that we want to implement, and we mark it down. And when we do the report, I put a demarcation as you made that decision, and here's all the results of the data from that." It's exactly how it does a school resource officer. Okay, here's what the proposal is. Here's the reaction, here's what we're looking for. And a lot of the data that you're about to see would be either supporting or showing you, "Hey, this is the impact that this decision had." So, I'm not saying that something like that's going to happen, but this is the type of meeting, this is the type of data that you would receive, in which that type of decision-making would come before you, and the expectation that you would have from us, that, "Okay, show me that this had an impact." You came to us, you said, "Here's the issue, here's the idea," and this is why we'd like to do that. So, I just wanted to lay some groundwork about the importance of this meeting in years going forward, and what you can expect from what might come out of this. So, with that, at this time, I'm going to start with Mr. Paget, and you need to have access to the...
If... Yes.
It's a write-up here, and I'll give you...
Sure. Absolutely.
You can come up and... Is that... It's a line. I got a...
Do you want to run it off my...
What's that?
You want me to run it for you, or just tell me in advance?
Yeah, yeah. No, I can do it up here.
Okay, well, after all the celebration stuff, we shift to this. While it definitely has meaning, it's not always the fun stuff. But this is what Mr. Jones and myself and Mr. Picken used to do, and Mrs. Hicks and Mr. Wick have been doing on a pretty consistent basis. But what we like to do at the end of the year is just take a look at what kind of data we saw from throughout the school year as regards student behavior, how that behavior was actually having an impact on our building. You know, a lot of the times, you go through it on a daily basis, but it just kind of all keeps clumping together, and then you get a chance to breathe at the end of the year and say, "Gosh, was this bad? Was it good? How did we handle this?" So, you know, as a whole, comparing last year to this year was kind of, it was just different. Knowing that last year, we were in school for three-quarters of the year, and then all of a sudden, we had no discipline for the last nine weeks. And then this year, we come back, and yes, we're in school, but we've got half the kids on a daily basis all the way through the first three-quarters, and then it shifted. So, we anticipated that our discipline was going to be significantly lighter this year during the hybrid scheduling. It didn't disappoint. We were definitely on a honeymoon phase for the first, again, three-quarters. And then as soon as we came back a hundred percent, honeymoon phase ended, and we went right back to blending every single kid, and just naturally, not because we had bad kids, but just when more kids get to be around each other, they tend to make different choices sometimes, so.
Can you blow that?
Yep, absolutely. All right, so the top paragraph just kind of talks about our numbers in general. And looking at our total student enrollment this year, we're sitting at the high school level, about one thousand five hundred and sixty-five students. So what we do is when we have discipline issues, we go through what we call a referral process. Referrals can be given by teachers, they can be given by principals, they can be given by support staff members throughout the building. This year, we had a total of two thousand three hundred and fifty-four referrals that encompassed all of our different categories. So we can choose anything from a rules violation to disruptive behavior to, it might be tobacco, it could be bullying and harassment. There's a very large, a large list that we can choose from. As a whole, though, as we kind of talked, as we were guessing this was going to be, that two thousand three hundred and fifty-four referrals was an overall decrease of about thirty-three percent from last year. So again, a pretty good-sized chunk. We still had some behavior, but as a whole, again, it decreased. One of the things we like to do is, you know, as you go through the building, you think, gosh, I feel like I'm working with the same kid all the time. And those are kind of the kids that we get to know very well, but at the same time, we know, hey, we've got to do something about it. So out of that total number of referrals, we did have one thousand two hundred and one referrals that were generated by a grand total of sixty-two students. So if you look at that just from a member's perspective, we had three point nine percent of our PBHS student body that were accounting for fifty-one percent of the referrals throughout the building. So I look at that and say, as a whole, gosh, we've got some, you know, some kids that were making some poor choices frequently. However, we also had a huge number of kids that were making very, very few poor choices at all. You know, as a whole, and I think whether, I was a principal in Davenport before joining you guys over here, I've seen it the same way throughout every building and every district I've ever been in. Now, the majority of kids are there to learn and doing a great, you know, a great job on a daily basis. Just sometimes we've got some kids that maybe have different backgrounds or coming to school with different challenges, and sometimes that reflects in their behaviors. Our average daily attendance is another piece that we like to look at each year. Our average daily attendance actually went up this year. We were sitting at ninety-seven point one seven percent as a building for overall average daily attendance. So looking at that again, and that's kind of including the hybrid, but all of our kids are there. We put them all back in the building, and again, most of them are doing the right thing.
Can you add a question to...
Yeah.
Just a clarification point. So that data point is only once we came back a hundred percent?
That was overall when kids were supposed to be in the building. So if it's a hybrid student that's supposed to be in class on Monday, or a hybrid B student that's supposed to be in the building as a whole, it was meaning for all the kids that were supposed to be in a seat on a daily basis. We had ninety-seven, over ninety-seven percent of the kids showing up when they should be.
Typically, we run around ninety-six percent is where we typically are in the district.
To clarify, just will we be collecting data from that one hundred percent?
All year.
Yep, all year. Yep. So this is a chart, and this should be in your pack also. This is kind of a look at past years. So like Mr. Schreger said, we're usually in the ninety-sixes. Last year, we were a little bit under ninety-six. This year, we jumped up a little bit above ninety-seven. The one through six here, this just kind of gave us a snapshot of, out of all of the referrals, what were the main categories that we were seeing this year? Honestly, it's really about the same six categories almost yearly. As a whole, the missing class, which that goes up to that attendance piece, but missing class, whether that's eighth period, study hall, or skipping a class throughout the day, that made up one thousand nine hundred and fifty-four of our total referrals. So about four hundred other total referrals were for other discipline reasons. That was about a seventeen and a half percent decrease. One thing that I would tie that to is because, as you see, that's the lowest decrease that we had. I work with all the juniors and seniors, but I would say this year it was unique because we were offering remote learning all year. I think not only did our kids that were at home learning, they knew they could access the education. If they were not in the building, that was their choice to do so. But I think it also definitely carried over to the rest of our students. We had other students that were noticing, well, hey, I don't necessarily have to be in class to be able to get all of the information that I'm getting. I can still access my homework assignments, I can still access notes and be able to access things to prepare myself for an assessment. So we all talked, Mr. Jones and Mr. Erickson and I did, and Mr. Hung. I definitely think that that was reflective. We had a lot of students that were choosing not to be in class at different times throughout the year, which I think made that decrease a little bit smaller. I think going back to next year, I think we'll see that even out a lot now that that online portion, even though we are one-to-one, it won't be of the same significance as it was this year. Number two category was tardies to just kids not getting to class quite, you know, quite on time as what they should. Parking violations were still up there as always. Number four, I put this in the middle, usually this is one that sits at number four. As you can see, the number actually was down to six. But inappropriate use of technology, we had thirty-one total referrals. That was down by seventy-one percent. What that is, is just looking at cellphone use within the classroom typically. Are students using cellphones when they shouldn't? Very honestly, in terms of our policy this year, last year, we put into effect a parking lot in each class where teachers were using parking lots where students would put their phones in, start to go to class, grab their phones when they left. This year, we did not do the parking lot just due to the mass gatherings it would cause at the beginning and the end of class. So we really didn't place an emphasis on cellphones. I would say as a whole, I think our teachers would tell you the same thing, that they were a little frustrated with cellphone use as a whole this year. But at the same time, they were trying to look at the big picture and say, you know, our kids are going through a lot right now. Maybe writing a kid up for a cellphone referral isn't something that needs to be done today. Sometimes it was, as you can see, but just very, very few times. Next year, we are going to be going back to the parking lots, knowing that we are now a one-to-one district. So in past years, some teachers would make their own choices on cellphones due to maybe that a kid needed to be able to look something up for class and utilize it for an assignment. Now that we know you've got a device sitting right in front of you, the cellphone's only purpose now is going to turn into just social media and texting and communication. So being able to take that distraction back out of the kids' hands, hopefully we see a correlation with grades and doing better in class as well. Number five was rules violation, actually, number four. And then number six was disruptive behavior. All right. So that's our general referrals. Referrals, we usually will assign, it could be detentions, it could be lunch detentions. Kids are serving those before or after school, or I pull a kid out of their own, their social time that they would have during the course of the day. But the last data that we usually like to see is where is our significant behavior at? Where are those challenges, and what did we do about those? So we do have, you've got a document called PBHS suspension data. So this is just kind of a flow chart of how many students were removed from class. So anytime a student is removed, it's considered a suspension. So whether that's an in-school suspension or it is an out-of-school suspension. This year, we had a total of one hundred and fifteen either in-school or out-of-school suspensions for a total of sixty-two students that were assigned that one of those two consequences. In regards to what we assign those consequences to, we always go back to our student handbook and look at, was this a, we call it, a level-two, level-three, or level-four offense? It could be anything from a significant disruptive behavior, let's say a large argument between kids that happened within a hallway or happened within the cafeteria. Honestly, I can't say that I've ever had many issues with students being incredibly disrespectful back to a teacher, but maybe something I've seen in the past. Or it could be fighting, it could be tobacco use, it could be drugs. I've got a chart up here for that as well. But as we suspend, we always want to keep in mind, okay, who are we suspending, why? Honestly, I think at PBHS, and sorry if this is very big, let me try to get this a little bit bigger. I believe that at the high school, we do a very good job of, if we are going to assign a consequence like a suspension, we do a very good job of looking at what was the action and what is the end result? Instead of looking at who is the kid and what is the end result? I think if you get in the business of just disciplining a personality, that's when you can get in big trouble. So our numbers are pretty consistent across the board, whether it's male and female. So fifty-six, we have a fifty-six percent male population in our school. We actually suspended fifty-six percent males this year. It actually came out identical. Ethnicity, looking at ethnicity, everything is almost right in line. Eighty-five percent Caucasian population in our building. We're at an eighty-eight percent of our suspensions were to that particular demographic. Asian, Black, Hispanic, multiracial, again, all actually came in either right at it or below in terms of percentages. We are always trying to be very aware of our students that are on an IEP within our special education program in regards to not taking those students out of the opportunities to get their education on a daily basis. Again, you see it, it's eight percent to nine percent, so again, right in there. So making sure, if you read the news from communities close, that concept of disproportionality, making sure we're not disproportionate based upon the students that we're working with. So again, I think suspension, it was there. Luckily, we did not have a lot of it, and hopefully we see that trend to continue to go down. Any questions on the suspension or referral stuff that I went over so far?
It seems like the, when you look at the suspension by grade, it seems that the ninth and tenth graders certainly have a lot more suspensions than the juniors in eleventh and twelfth grade. Any speculation as to why that is?
You know, I have my theories. In general, our ninth and tenth graders, a lot of our suspension numbers were coming from, we saw a, and I'll let maybe Deputy Fah, he could even talk to this too a little bit, but we saw a return of vaping this year. I'd say a lot of our suspension turned back into vaping. And I don't have necessarily a reason for that on why it made a big return, because it actually dipped last year. And I wasn't over here the years before, but looking at our numbers, we kind of had been seeing a little bit of a dip, and it came back up. A lot of our ninth and tenth graders ended up with vaping suspensions. Generally speaking, ninth and tenth graders from a behavioral standpoint, typically they haven't matured quite yet, and you get a lot of that typical cafeteria behavior, hallway behavior, classroom behavior. Doesn't necessarily always turn into a suspension thing, but it's a referral nonetheless. This year, we did have a pretty significant increase back in the vaping concept. That would be reflective, actually, on this particular chart. See if I can blow it up. That may be the biggest I can get it. But over on the far right is, and this is our tobacco, tobacco possession and drug use. But our, the red bar is our ninth graders, the gray bar is our tenth graders, the blue bar is our eleventh graders, and then the turquoise bar, if there were one this year, would be the seniors. We didn't have any tobacco suspensions out of our senior class this year, and typically we think that'd be the opposite. But I think with, just like behavior, as you see kids mature and get older and not make the poor choices that maybe they did in the hallways and the cafeterias, they hit that junior-senior class, I think the same thing can be said for vaping, tobacco use. I don't think kids are quite at that point where they realize, even though we're trying to educate them of what kind of impact that will have on them. I still think it might be the cool thing to do. Again, that's just my opinions, but that definitely had an impact on our suspension numbers for the ninth and tenth graders. Any other questions on suspension or referral? Well, I think going forward, I know we had some discussions in terms of what our handbook could potentially look like, if there's anything that we want to put in there to deter some of this behavior. So those are things I know we have coming up here in the next couple of weeks that maybe we'll have discussions about. But again, I think that as a whole, we had a very good year. It's nice that we didn't see anything remain flat, even though we had so few of kids on a daily basis. We saw the decreases that we were hoping we would see. And again, we know that it'll pick up again next year when every kid comes back. But that's just the life of being a high school setting with a whole bunch of teenagers.
So Adam, we asked the questions kind of off-topic a little bit, but looking at your concurrent enroll, or not your concurrent, but your credit recovery.
Yes.
You started that last week, correct?
Yep.
How many students did you have sign up that you looked at for...
We right now, I think it was fifty-one students came in starting this past Monday. So that was spread out between English, Social Studies, Math, and Science. So these are students that failed a class somewhere along the road here in the last year and a half especially. We had a credit recovery last year, but we still might have had those students that were a little bit too far behind. So we had fifty-one come in. We staffed that with classroom teachers for each content area, but the students were using the Edge Annuity Credit Recovery Program to be able to work through and get, and again, it was just, not that it was changing grades, the grades from when they failed were still there, but their classes to be able to give them credit towards graduation is what we... So we've been consistent through the first week and a half in regards to students showing up and participating. So it's been positive so far.
How many are you still reaching out to if they did not come, the original fifty-one you said?
We at this point are not, we haven't been reaching out any more to those kids aside from this past week. I did take three more phone calls this morning from parents that made that decision, were like, hey, we still want to get them back in. The issue that we know when we do a credit recovery program like this is if you put students that may have struggled in the classroom setting itself, hand them over onto an online program that they are now responsible for doing all of it on their own without any content support, they're not going to be very successful. So it's a matter of getting them into the building within a timeframe that still allows them to complete the required hours of the Edge Annuity Program. So at this point, knowing that we're four days in with two and a half weeks left, it's not something that I think we'd be putting that student in a great position to be successful going forward, unless we can get them in now.
Thank you.
Can you just explain to the board one more time, when you talk about referrals, tell us how many different ways a referral can be made when you say a referral?
Yep.
Does it have to come from a teacher? Can it come from students? How is that generated? How is a referral generated?
A referral is always generated by a staff member. So it's a behavior that is witnessed either by, again, typically classroom teachers, a lot of the, or I should say, a lot of time. So if there's a behavior within a classroom, they've been told to put their cellphone away multiple times, refuse to do it, keep getting it out, the teacher would write a referral. That referral then is generated through our program, comes down to our dean. Then our dean, if it's a small behavior, he typically would deal with it himself. If it's a larger behavior, it typically gets kicked over to either Mr. Jones or I, and we end up calling that student down. Or the student, if it's something severe enough to actually be removed from class, they'd come down to the office and we'd deal with them immediately. So a teacher would be number one. Again, anything in the hallway, that can be generated by either a teacher that witnessed that behavior, the hall monitor that we have in the building, Deputy Fah, myself, Mr. Hung, any staff member that is within the hallway could generate that. And then we also have referrals that are generated by our office staff as well, but those are very topic-specific. So for example, number five on this list is rules violation. So we had seventy-eight different rules violations. A lot of that is just asking our kids to make sure they're following general sign-in, sign-out procedures, coming into the building in a safe way, and making sure that they're following the protocol that we've established within our handbook. So if they're going to be late, again, parking, coming in through the main office, signing in, instead of just coming in through a back door and asking a student to leave class, they'll prop the door open for them so they can come in the side door so they don't have to go all the way around. So that's where that rules violation piece would come in. So those would be generated a lot of the times by office staff. And then, I'd say they'll go one more rules violation. Sometimes we do have students that they are, if they're skipping detentions, and that was a referral, it could turn into something else. So if a student's not following through on what the expectations that they had from one consequence, then that can be upped, and that would end up being either office staff or dean of students that they have an in-school suspension if students refuse to serve the detentions.
Thanks.
Adam, could you share different interventions you have in place in the building to help students who might be struggling, whether it's discipline or academics, for example, your student assistance team that you have, your counselors, school-based therapists? How do you, so you're not just assigning a suspension, that's the end of it? Can you just kind of walk through the board some supports you have in place?
Sure, yeah. We have what we call a student assistance team that meets every Tuesday morning at nine o'clock, so right at the end of first period. So it's the counselors in our building, Mr. Jones, myself, it's the other assistant principal, then Mrs. Gizek, who is kind of a, she's an instructional coach that is very good working with some of her students, her background. So we meet every Tuesday morning, and a lot of it is talking about grades. So we break down how students are doing, are they getting, we have, it's a D and an F list, so many students get Ds or Fs in class. We talk about those students. We might assign them to an academic study hall instead of being in an open study hall. We might assign a sophomore through a senior to an eighth period, since that's still part of our school day, and they can then go up and work with the teacher that they're struggling with. But we also, within that meeting, talk about behaviors. So we may talk to them and notice, whether it's the counselor having a great relationship with a kid or something that we've noticed where we say, you know, maybe he's not only having a phone call at home and talking to the parent about what's going on and what are you seeing at home, but looking into, do they need school-based therapy? Is there a social worker that we could get involved? Is there somebody else in the building that has a great relationship with that kid that might be able to go and say, hey, what's going on? You know, so again, it could be, let's say it's an athlete. You know, is there a coach in the building that they may have a good connection with? Or again, do I know a teacher that has got a great connection? We notice, hey, this kid's got an A in that class during third period, that they've got three Ds in the rest of their schedule, and now all of a sudden we're starting to see them have behavioral stuff. And we might go to that teacher and say, hey, what's going on here? You obviously get along great with them, you have a good connection where they're working hard for you. So a lot of those discussions. But I'd say the biggest thing we do though is contact parents. Parents should be number one priority in regards to reaching out to them and saying, this is the behavior we're seeing here. If we don't tell them that it's happening, chances are that kid's not going to go home and tell the parent that I got a detention at school today. So it's always got to be priority number one.
When it comes to bullying and things like that, if a student comes and reports a detention, how's the referral process?
Yeah, yeah. If a student reports a bullying or harassment situation, that always comes, and that, we deal with that collectively as an administration. So what we want to get an idea, we always have them write a little written report. That could come in for a P3, through our P3 app, sometimes we'll get information initially that way, but it could also be a student that's come to the office and said, hey, here's what's going on. So we have them write a report and a summary of what's happening, we talk with that student. Then from there, we try to, we've got to get to, okay, who is also witnessing this behavior? Obviously, it's very real for that student, but who is also witnessing this? Are your friends seeing this? Is there a teacher seeing this? And then from there, following up with the students that are around, and then also looking at video camera, looking at everything that we can to get a very clear picture about what's going on. So then we can ultimately, if it is happening, hold that student accountable, contact families, and make sure that it stops at that point. Oftentimes, if we have a harassment or a bullying situation that gets too, that has gotten extreme and is very clear-cut, we go directly to what we call a no-contact contract, is what it is. And basically, we put it in writing for those students and say, from this point out, from this point going forward, you are to not have contact with this student, period. Not in the hallways, not in the classrooms, not in the cafeteria, and if you do, and it's brought to us, then we have to investigate it again. And if that ends up happening, there will be a minimum of a level-two consequence, which could be a suspension for that student. But that's always communicated with the parent that would be involved for students on both sides.
So next year, since this last year was sort of an unusual year, this next year, especially for our rising sophomores, ones who were freshmen this last year, they're not necessarily used to, let's say, the cellphone parking lot, or the skipping of the class's consequences, like that. So is there going to be emphasis made that this next year, that last year was an unusual year, this next year we're going back to the regular policies we had in the past, and there're going to be some, there's going to be some emphasis on that?
Yeah, I think we will hit on that the very first week when we have our classroom meetings, but more so than anything, it's also got to be communicated with consistency by our teachers and our staff. They're the ones that work with the kids the majority of the time, so being able to have all 90, 91 teachers throughout the building being consistent, saying, here's the parking lot, we are going to be using this. We follow that up with our communication as well from our class meeting standpoint, and then from there, being consistent with every conversation with the kid going forward that, hey, you knew that this was the case. And if a kid, for example, refuses to give their cellphone and put it in the parking lot in the classroom, then we have the option to be able to hold the clock, hold the phone for the rest of the day down with us, but again, then it turns into a conversation with the parent on what overall expectations are. I would say that our conversations with tough kids, and their cellphones are very important to them, and it's, we've got, I always want to relate to the kid and understand this is a very important device, it's kind of their lifeline at home for many of our kids, but communicating with the kids that, okay, this is a privilege. We are required to educate you, but we're not required to educate you with a cellphone in your hand. So just making sure that we're communicating, and talking with the kids on why, and this is why we're doing this, and this is the kind of outcome you can get if you put that away, and it's not distracting. I had a kid this year that he failed every single class for a semester, and I talked to his parent over and over and over again and said, take away a cellphone, take away a cellphone, take away a cellphone, you're the one that pays the bills, take away a cellphone. It was the single biggest factor in him not doing his work in class. And I took it over and over and over and over again, and it just kept coming back. And finally, second semester, we took away a cellphone for good, and he passed every single class with a C minus or better second semester. So it's, there's a huge link there.
Thank you, Adam.
Yeah, thank you.
Tia, excellent.
Hello, everyone. Okay, so, um, we'll start with demographics here. Thanks to Adam, he kind of just did a preview and kind of have similar things going on with schools and everything, so. Here you can see that the school continues to grow. Twenty-seven percent over the six-year time period. So, and then we'll go here to our referrals. And we have it broken down. We had a total number of 172 referrals involving 151 individual students. There was seventeen and a half percent of our students received a referral at some point throughout the year. That's down from 28.7%. However, when we look at what type of year that we've had, it's kind of an unfair comparison. During the hybrid, just like Adam said, it was like we're in kind of a honeymoon phase, you know? Colin and Michael made fun of me because I'm like, oh, what are you all talking about? There's no discipline in it. And they're like, just wait, just wait. And sure enough, as soon as we came back 100%, is when the discipline started coming through. So our top three referrals consisted of inappropriate technology, use of technology, and just like Adam said, that is mainly having the cellphone and they shouldn't have it. And my take on that is, part of it is because, like he said, we weren't using the cellphone parking lots, the students had their cellphones, teachers told them to keep it in the backpack, but it's closed there, and it's hard for them to resist pulling it out a lot of time. But we do have a system in place where they get that, that first time that they get it, there's a referral put in the system right away, they get a conversation with myself or Colin about that and tell them the process. We had zero percent of students come back for a third time. We had a few that came back for a second time with the cellphone use, but we were adamant with them that if they have that third time, they can no longer have it in the classroom at all, and it has to be parked in the front office, or they have to leave it at home. And they're kind of connected to those, and that kind of, they're like, no, I'm not getting a third, because they don't want that to happen. The second biggest one was for disruptive behavior, and that could be anything as far as back-sassing the teacher, horse-playing with another student, or anything like that. And then rules violation, and those are, like Adam said, very specific. Let's see. So out of all the students getting the referrals, sorry, there you can see our cellphone, the use rate over 47, and then three of our students had it for a second time, and we had zero offenses for the third uses there. Late to school was a big issue, there was 24, almost 25% of the students that were being targeted to school, and we also have a system in place for that. When students are targeted to school, they, you know, they get three opportunities to be late, and then they get a conversation with one of the deans. A lot of times what we end up doing is having to call parents, because at the junior high level, it's a little different than high school, we don't know if that's a parent issue or a student issue. So we have a conversation with the student, but we also have a conversation with the parents, say, hey, is there something that's going on at home that is preventing students to get into school on time? Is there something that we need to help you with too, in order to get the students to school on time? So we try to work really closely with our parents, you know, as much as we can, because we know that they are the biggest influencer in the changes in our schools right now, especially at the junior high level. Any questions about that?
Tia, just to distinguish, sorry, the color coding between physical assault and targeted school is pretty darn close, I mean, you look at this like, what? The big one is, the big one is the targeted.
Yes. So we did not have any after-school detention just because of, you know, the year that we had, but we did have some in-school and out-of-school suspensions. Not huge, but we had them. So, let's look at this. So the 22 of our students received an in-school suspension, that was two and a half percent of our population. Only six of those occurred during our hybrid model. Again, that was down from last year, but again, it was a different type of year, so. And then here, you can see the breakdown as to what was the offense, is why they were, they had received that type of consequence. I feel like one of the things that kind of helps us, and I think that we will continue to see kind of a downward trend with suspensions, is the other gain common, and we kind of have a similar philosophy on discipline, and we believe that discipline is an opportunity to teach something. And, you know, there are instances, of course, where out-of-school or in-school suspension is absolutely warranted, but we do try to use those discipline opportunities to teach our students something. We really want them to learn from their mistake and not make that mistake again. So again, we work very closely with parents, we work with our counselors very closely, and, you know, when it gets to the point where we feel like we've done, you know, everything that we can, maybe we need to take the next step, and we have the school-based therapy, which has been a godsend this year for a lot of our students as well. And then you see our race and ethnicity background here. Nothing huge, no huge disparities there. And you look at our female to male, that's where we see the bigger discrepancy. However, and I don't want to throw my fellow females under the bus, but if you look at the types of discipline that female students are called into the office for, it's harder to justify having a out-of-school suspension for those types of behavior infractions. But if you look at our records of bullying, most of those actually come from our cell students, which was a surprise to me. And then out-of-school suspension, we had very few, again. There were six students that received an out-of-school suspension, and same thing, it gets to the point where, you know, we've exhausted all of our options, and this is kind of a last resort type of thing, or if there's, you know, fighting, of course, drugs, those types of things, that just warrants, you know? Not sure how that was to teach a lesson in that sort of a situation.
Tia, as you reflect on the year, and maybe Mike, you can reflect on as well, so it's our first year having two deans of students at the junior high, again, different world in terms of the hybrid model versus every day. But as you look forward to next year, what did you learn from this year having two deans or working, you know, one group's working with a certain group of students, and Colin works with another group, where that looks like, what have you learned that you look forward to next year?
I guess I have the opportunity, I can view it from seeing it with one dean for the previous two years, and then this year when you have two deans. And as Ms. Hicks said, the first three quarters were no comparison, but a lot of the things that were occurring behind the scenes in a preventative measure really allowed us to not see the data on the end-of-the-year report. So some examples of that would be if you have a student who is marked absent first period, by second period, Mrs. Hicks would be calling a seventh-grade family, or Mr. Wick could be calling an eighth-grade family, saying, hey, your son or daughter has not logged in yet, and they're supposed to be logging in because they're in quarantine for 10 days, make sure they're logging in. So we're hitting those attendance purposes earlier. And I think also then that had a direct reflection on the academic level, that the kids, the more kids were getting work done, or they were passing their classes because of the earlier interventions that they had with those grades. So it'd be interesting to see moving forward, what's, in a normal year, what the data would show, and what are some of those strategies that they're able to do in a proactive measure, or a measure that's occurring sooner than it was with just one dean? It'll be really interesting to see that. But those are two things that I can see from an anecdotal standpoint, and my observations, that they were able to intervene far earlier than what was able to happen with just one dean.
And I would agree with that some then. Like I say, we work very closely with our parents, with our, lots of phone calls, I'm sure some of them are tired of hearing from us. I actually had to switch up instead of calling from the school phone, call from the cellphone because they didn't organize the number anymore. So, yeah. We did work very closely with our parents.
Another thing that I would also see is, earlier, a lot of our attendance issues were our online students, that just were not engaging in their learning and education. And the number of families that they were able to connect with and get them back into school because of what they were, or the conversations they're having over the course of the school year, we're starting to see more and more students returning to us, not only during the hybrid, but back 100% in person. And a lot of that has to do just with the frequent communication they had with the families, saying, okay, we understand, here's what we're seeing, here's where they're at from an academic standpoint, here's how many days they've been absent, we need them engaged in their education, we need them back in school, and just the frequent conversations they had with families, and when the families felt that time was right, they came back in. And I don't have a specific data number to that, but the number of students who then came back academically performed much higher when they were able to be there with their peers, with their teachers, to get that direct instruction, as opposed to online instruction, was very noticeable over the course of the year. And a lot of it had to do with the conversations, not only by our deans, but also our counselors.
And so here is the attendance, we were at 97% of our daily average attendance. So great. One of the things that was kind of glaring here was our online, our school access was at 12. And what we looked at is just like what Michael was saying, it had to do with a lot at the end of the game, during, when we first came back 100%, a lot of our online students were not engaging in the learning at all, and we had to do a lot of phone calls, we made some home visits and things like that, and we're ready to get a lot of them back in the building. And that made a huge difference in their learning, in their participation, and things like that, so. And even for a lot of them, their mental health status too.
Mr. Padgett kind of speculated on the numbers of the ninth and 10th graders being up more suspension-wise because of vaping. Are you seeing any of that trend in the junior high?
In years past, yes, but this year, no, knock on wood. It was a relatively quiet year when it came to tobacco products, vaping products, alcohol, drugs. It was a pretty quiet year, which is, it can be attributed to a lot of different things, we could speculate a lot of different things, but no, it was a very, very positive year. We had two really good classes that were here, and as Mr. Padgett said, there's always a certain percentage that caused some additional challenges, but for the most part, both grades were very good to work with, and hopefully we'll see that trend continuing.
And I think having the two deans also helped with that, because if you don't focus on seven classes, focus on eight, not that we don't, you know, cross paths and things like that, help each other out, but it's, I guess, you have a smaller group that you have to work with, building those relationships. And early on with our hybrid, that was Lyman Johnson, building relationships with these smaller groups and focusing on those students that needed that extra attention, were able to kind of seek them out right away and build those relationships and things like that, so that when discipline did come, it wasn't the first time that we were having interaction with them, so we already had that relationship and... that relationship, and maybe not having as many frequent flyers because of that.
No, I heard, I heard this last year, that maybe that there was maybe some disruption that occurred at the high school on the very last day of school. I don't know if that's true or not. Like, how is something like that handled? Like, you know, you'll get the referral, but it's the last day of school, so how do you guys handle situations like that, where it occurs at the end of the year, but there's been some type of disruptive behavior occurring?
Yeah, we, we did have a fight, um, right after sixth period on the very last day.
That's what I heard.
So it, it made it more challenging than usual trying to pinpoint exactly what happened. You know, usually if something like that happens, it's, you, you start pulling kids that were there, and you, you've got an exact picture of it and twelve videos of it, because it's an inappropriate use of technology, uh, referral piece where kids, at this point, for whatever reason, want to record everything. But, um, yeah, we, I, we met with both families involved, um, im- immediately, uh, by, between, within the first couple hours. Uh, their discipline actually will carry over it to the beginning of next year. Um, you know, as I know, when you talk to the first kid, oh, I couldn't really get in trouble, so that's why I figured, why, you know, I'll just, well, that's an inaccurate statement you can. Um, but, and the parents were good about it. Um, but it also, from the very first day of the knowledge we had of exactly what happened, by the time the next, by the time the weekend passed and Monday came, we had a little bit more information that kind of gave us a little bit different light on exactly how things happened. So, um, that was just follow-up, phone calls after that.
Any other?
I'm doing the look, I, I don't know if I misheard, but did you see the tardies rate was twenty-five percent?
Yeah, late to school.
Yeah. Twenty-five percent?
Yeah, just under twenty-five percent.
So do you think that's, um, what do you attribute that to? Because, I mean, these kids are not driving themselves. And you said, you know, in some cases it's a parent issue, but is it more of an issue with seventh graders because they're not used to getting up that?
No, I mean, it's, it's not really your start, we're sure. And we did have, we did have, uh, a lot of students, when you talked to them, they're like, why split through the alarm? And then we, we addressed that, okay, what time are you going to bed? Are you having your, um, technology in the room with you? Because a lot of them are, well, I'm using that as myself, my alarm clock. So, you know, it's different things, and we try to, when it's like constantly, then we'll advise the parent, hey, maybe you need to wake them up in the morning, not relying on them. Um, give an analog clock, which the students only know what that is. So different things. We do, you know, we try to work with, yeah, you're right, a lot of it is because, you know, and, and our students are, a lot of them are, have so many extracurriculars, that it's not their fault all the time that they're getting to bed late. Um, they have all these extracurriculars, you know, after school, by the time they get home, then going through, uh, whatever schoolwork that they have to get done, and then there's, you know, they're just getting in the bed late. And then there's the other half where they are on the phone all night, uh, playing games, or talking with friends that are in different states, because we have some, um, kind of transient students as well. Um, so there's just, it's, it's just so different from student to student, and we try to, to do it on a case-by-case basis.
So do you think it had anything to do with, I, I kind of felt like at first that a lot of people were opting to drive their kids to school rather than having them ride the bus. And if they were, if they had to catch the bus, they, um, had it.
I would, I would agree with that, because when students ride the bus, they're never late. They're excused. If the bus is running late, they're excused, that with initially having seventy-five percent or higher of families driving their students, um, and in those of you that drove in the morning, if you got to the building, or got to a certain point by seven seventeen, you were waiting all the way back to Pebble Creek. Uh, so just the ability, once they got onto school grounds, they were able to float back in the parking lot and things were fine, it was just the ability to get into the junior high parking lot. Uh, so I'm hopeful and anticipating more students and families will elect to ride the bus next year, which will, mine included, will decrease the number of vehicles dropping off, but that will be to be determined. But I do feel that that did have a significant impact in the number of late to schools, because once those doors locked at seven thirty-five in the back, then the parents had to drop off. So the number of students signing in at seven thirty-eight, seven forty, seven forty-five, because of that very issue very well, might, hopefully will be decreased next year.
I think there'll be different next year, Mike and Valerie, I hope we know too about band, not band, but chorus and orchestra before school next year, if you want to highlight that.
So sixth grade chorus, the decision was made through a lot of conversations this year with sixth grade choirs occurring in their elementary building. That decision was made to continue that practice. So instead of it being a fourth and fifth grade choir, and sixth grade coming to the junior high, now it's going to be a combined fifth and sixth grade choir in their elementary buildings. So therefore, the sixth grade students won't be coming out to the junior high. Uh, but we will have orchestra continuing or remaining, uh, coming into the buildings for fifth and sixth grade, but fourth grade will stay in their elementary buildings. So just looking down the road of what are ways we can reduce the amount of car traffic into the junior high, uh, because we all know that that contributes to a lot of congestion, even, even the buses coming in, and just the ability for us to get started at seven thirty-four in the morning. So those are pieces that we're looking at. We're hopeful that, uh, with the sixth grade choir staying in their elementary building, that's eliminating that many cars that are going to be dropping off those two days a week, and then taking out the fourth grade orchestra, which is by and large the largest orchestra, um, per grade level. Hopefully those decisions will start to see that ripple effect over the next couple of years as we continue to grow at the junior high as well.
And then remember, in two years, we hope that they'll have the roundabout in front of the junior high, which will also hopefully keep traffic flow going through.
Another benefit is that chorus changes, that sixth graders will be in their whole building to start their school day, and they won't be tardies.
Can you talk a little bit, I don't know if it's a public issue or not, but I've heard that there were some dress code, I don't know if they were issues, but I've heard about signs. Can you talk to me about what happened with all that?
Perception is reality. So, um, we had a, a little dress code, uh, protest, if you will. And what it was is that, if you look at our referrals, we have zero dress code referrals. Uh, we did not focus on that, and when we did, it was very brief, you know, zip up, put your head down, that type of thing. And if it was anything bigger than that, then it was a private conversation in the, in the dean's office. And, well, what happened was, uh, a couple of students, uh, you know, they did, they made some signs, and they put them up, and they were, uh, really facetious. There was, you know, one that said, um, my shoulders aren't the reason that your son is failing algebra, stuff like that. And so they were taking it as if we were focusing on them, on just females, number one, which was far, furthest from the truth than ever, because we address more males with the hood than anything all year. And then they were, uh, feeling that in, in, in doing that, that we were sexualizing them. And, um, so I had a couple of conversations, uh, one-on-one conversations with students that were very, uh, serious about it. There were some I felt like just kind of jumped on because, hey, this is something to do. But there were some students that were, you know, they were serious, they had, you know, kind of a plan. And, uh, we talked about that in, in the dress code, and then, uh, Michael actually went into the, our, um, dress code and kind of reworded some things, because even the verbage in there is, you know, it is very sexist, you know, you can't deny it. Um, but it wa, it was very short-lived. Uh, I think that we, we handled it, uh, really well. The students were receptive after they felt like they were heard, and that we were taking this seriously, so. But yeah, there was a little, it was a good experience for me.
It, one of the numbers I read on the referrals by event type page is zero referrals for bullying. Um, so I guess in terms of high school, obviously, that doesn't necessarily mean there's zero instances of bullying. And so, um, I guess my aren't the referrals we made, and, um, we aren't highlighting that issue. How can we be assured that we are addressing an issue that negatively impacts mental health for all of our students?
Right, uh, that's a good question. That's why our zero was read there, because we had reports of bullying, there were absolute reports of bullying, but they were unfounded reports of bullying. Once we did the research and, and got into it, it was really, um, conflict between the students. It was never a, a one-sided thing that you can get over and over and things like that, so. Um, but we take all the reports seriously, and this is why I tell parents, because a lot of times, uh, students don't want to report things. They, they feel like if they're, if they reported, then it's going to be some sort of backlash and things like that. And we're very discreet in, you know, how we go, go about researching, uh, the reports, and just like I said, as we, you know, you know, friends, and, um, pulling videotapes, teachers, anyone who's around, uh, people in the hallway and things like that. But we do take those reports seriously, and we investigate every last one of them.
And I would say too, from the high school, we had four, we ran our reports today, and we had four incidents of bullying and or harassment this year. I would echo what Tia said. I mean, we, it wasn't that we didn't have other things go on throughout the year, and a lot of it is, is for many students, their perception of what's going on to start with has, well, I, if there's a conflict, but a lot of the times those kids do not know how to, how to work with that conflict. So it turns into, well, I heard that this person said this about me. And then when they hear that, then they have responses, and then it's friends going back and forth with each other that are carrying communication going back on. So it might be, hey, this kid's talking about me, they're bullying me. But once we get into it again, it's, it might be a friend group that's kind of talking things, but then the friend groups kind of playing both sides in a way. I would say we, our ninth and tenth grade class were very, um, guilty of that this year. I'd say throughout the year where we had a lot of that stuff that went on. But again, when it came down to a bullying harassment issue, ninety-nine percent of the time you ask the kid, what do you, where, where are we going to go with this? I want it to stop. A, and that's what every kid and every parent wants. And as soon as we get, can get a report that there is at least something going on, we are able to stop it versus something that's gotten out of control without us knowing.
Yeah, exactly. You're able to put it into a recording. Yeah, I didn't know if it was to, um, teachers are handling a lot of that stuff, and it's just not getting up to.
I would say the teachers, the teachers hand that over to us pretty quickly.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And I would say, compared to years past, being in the hybrid mode for as long as we were, and having class sizes of eight kids, nine kids, we just didn't have the traditional conflicts that would normally arise in a class of twenty-five kids. So just the smaller numbers and building those relationships in those smaller numbers alleviated a lot of the problems that typically exist within buildings. So they kind of talked about it from a honeymoon stage, but I looked at it from a standpoint that was able to build those relationships with the kids. Uh, not only teacher to student, but student to student, and it built that sense of community. So, um, when students did return, it made it a little bit, uh, easier since those, uh, relationships were established. But when you have a class of twenty-five, the odds of some conflicts emerging are far greater than if there's eight to ten kids per grade, or per class. So I think that contributes to a lot of the low numbers across the board, just with the, the length of time they're in that hybrid. So there's, for many negatives that were associated with that, there were definitely some positives, uh, that were occurring from the hybrids model as well, so.
Yeah, I actually, um, responded to a discipline issue, um, in a classroom with the student, and pulled around, talked to them, and what can we do so that this doesn't continue? What, you can send half of the student home. And I have this issue where this is half the student, so unfortunately that's not possible.
So kind of dovetail off of Director Kunkel's question. Um, so if there is kind of conflict, as you, as you all have mentioned, that's not really reflected on this report, correct? All those episodes of conflict?
It can be, yes.
It can be. And even though conflicts may start as conflicts, sometimes conflicts, if not resolved, can lead to, let's say, a bullying problem. And so even if there are conflicts that's not really labeled as bullying, we don't want to turn it into a bullying issue. So how are these conflicts monitored to make sure that it doesn't go into something more serious?
And that really depends on the situation. Again, we, we, um, address each one on a case by case. But, um, sometimes, like, when we realize that it is conflict where there's been a back and forth, we ask the student, um, do you think that it's a good idea that we come in and have a mediation, that you bring that student in? And most times they do want to do that, because they really want to be, you know, friends, or they want to squash whatever it is and be done with it. And so there's that mediation with, you know, an adult in the room, and they're able to do it that way. And if, if that is not the case, like, I did have a situation this year where a student was like, no, I don't want to be in the room with, with that student, I just want them to leave me alone. And then, um, what, what, what happens is, all admin is, are alerted to the situation and the students, as well as the teachers and other staff members are alerted, aware that these students should not, um, be interacting at all. If they have classes together, if it's possible, we change their classes. If that's not possible, then the teacher makes sure that they're on opposite ends of the room, and they're never, um, paired together in a room or anything like that.
And if it isn't a disciplinary matter, as Mr. Padgett said, we could go the route of a no-contact contract as well. Always the goal of learning to be able to coexist in a building together, but also understand that there's going to be ramifications and expectations for their behavior moving forward. So we've gone to that route as well.
And just teaching, I guess, a concern I have too with the no-contact or just separating them is, you know, that ability of individuals to recognize the fact that just because, um, you don't get along with someone, doesn't give you the right to interact in that manner. So yes, it can separate you, but as long as you have that as a coping skill to your frustration, even with somebody else outside the issue, and feeling like you can, um, address someone that is having that, you know, and weep her with their eyes, really doesn't get at the heart of it. But I, if, if, do you think that some of the mental health counseling that we have can help with that?
Yeah, and that is something that we do do. We do, uh, reach out to the counselors and say, this is a skill set that this student is lacking, and they'll work with them in building, um, that's, that skill set. And that goes to both sides, because sometimes it's on the other side where they don't have the ability to self-advocate. And so there are just different skills that we do, work with the counselors, but we want them to, to grow and do, like I said, discipline, we always want them to learn, so.
Thank you, Tia. Any other questions at all? Great. Well, let's go ahead, and I'll take a motion on that, on the, um, report.
I want the board to approve the junior high high school attendance and discipline reports as presented. Roll call, please, Mr. Statement.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ears?
Yes.
Mrs. Brackman?
Yes.
Mrs. Houseman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Director Wesley?
Yes. Thank you guys all for all your work on this, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, our next, uh, item of business is the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Edison Academy allocation of shared expenses, which you know, all know, we share it with, um, our, uh, neighboring districts. So Brian, if you want to elaborate on that?
You bet. In your board packet tonight, there's something that's called Appendix A, which is the allocation of Edison Academy funds and how we support the program down down Bettendorf. Um, just as a reminder, um, we have a twenty-eight E agreement, but does not have to be renewed every single year, and this is not one of the years to renew it. So just want to bring forward the expenses and what this will look like for the upcoming school year, and just kind of explain how we break it down in terms of what is our percentage, what is North Scott's percentage, and what is Bettendorf's percentage. So what you see in the paper here, and there's a couple, the first two lines are kind of confusing. So right now, we have Tammy Shelf is the administrator down at, um, Edison Academy. And what we do there is, she is technically probably employed more through Bettendorf. So when you look at this line where it says salary benefits, at risk where it says forty-five percent of her time, school to work ten percent, that is strictly all to Bettendorf School District. So fifty-five percent of her time is designated to Bettendorf, okay? The other forty-five percent that you see there, which is nineteen point two eight to Bettendorf, twelve point eight six for us, and twelve point eight six for North Scott, that is the time that she's involved with, with us, and what we're paying for in terms of her salary. So when you take that forty-five percent of her time, the next line shows what we actually pay of that part of her salary. So we are paying twenty-eight point five seven percent of her salary in that forty-five percent period of time. So when you take that 45% of her time, the next line shows what we actually pay of that part of her salary. So we are paying 28.57% of her salary in that 45% period of time. So for us, that equates to approximately, um, little over $15,000 that we would pay towards her salary. That's our responsibility. North Scott is similar and then Bettendorf absorbs the rest, okay? The next line that you see there, shared expenses, just a reminder, we share expenses, we have 28.57. That can be anything from, um, gas, electric, instructional supplies, you know, equipment. The other thing that would also be in there, there are four teachers down at Edison, um, in the four core areas. Um, we share, all of us split the cost of the math teacher, okay? So also in that shared expense line would be part of the salary for that math teacher we divided out, okay? The next line is the annual, um, rent expense, which is $11,500, which we paid for rental for the year of that building. The other one is indirect cost per student. And the only reason why this is, I mean, it's not that it's a huge, it's expense of $1,400, but how that equates to is our state per pupil is $7,330 that we get per child. 1% of our allotment, which is 20 seats, we can have 20 students down there. So if you take 1% of that $7,000, multiply that 20 students, that comes to the 1466. The only time that's really even a, a thought, um, should we need more than 20 seats? Or should North Scott need more than 20 seats? They could have one of our seats if there's an opening, for example. And then they would pay us that amount back of that. Um, we average, I would say somewhere between 12 on a high year, maybe 15 students at any one time in the program. I can't think of a time when we've ever hit that 20 mark, it'd be rare, but it has happened.
Well, I'm glad you asked, because just cuing this up, I think all of you need to know that when I started here in 2002, we were consistently between 18 and 20 every year. And we had 1,100 students, 1,074, somewhere around that area. We did not have an academic intervention, that's, we did not have a juvenile court liaison. We did not have, I mean, we, there were a number of things that we did not have. We also did not have, uh, the opportunity to block English 9 and American History Block where we had smaller class sizes that focused on relationships predominantly with that. That's huge, and we didn't have flexible. So the intervention of those things combined led to a couple of things. One, our, um, students failing classes dropped precipitously. We consistently had summer school offered every year I was there. And as a matter of fact, two of my daughters taught summer school because of credit recovery. And then we went, my first interventions occurred, we were not seeing 20, 25 kids failing an English class or not or something where we needed to have that. It was down to maybe six, eight, 10. It wasn't enough to justify, you know, putting that in. Also, a number of kids needing or wanting to go down to Edison started dropping down to where I'm guessing, Mr. Sues, maybe four or five years ago? I was seriously looking at whether we should continue this partnership. We were down to six kids. And this is one of those where you just, you know, again, you have some years where it ebbs and flows. But I think, um, just to remember, we went, we've gone from 1,100 kids back 15 years ago to 1,565, and we're still holding steady at 10 to 12 kids needing Edison. And going down to Edison is not necessarily because the kids are dumb, they can't handle it. It's not that at all. This is all about relationships and the smaller class sizes and everything you just heard were laid here. But for some kids, this setting just doesn't work. But as we read, every time we open this meeting up, not for some kids, but for every kids and not some areas, but in all areas, this is one of those supports that we're putting our money where our mouth is at and we're not leaving any kid behind. If we can help it and that's the right setting, that's where they go. And we go down to the graduation every year that Edison puts on. And those kids, when they tell their story about, you know what, I was kind of lost in the bigger setting. I got down here, I got to know my teachers better and all that kind of stuff. It, it really is a powerful testament, so.
And so we have four excellent teachers down there, um, in the four core areas. We also, we cover the salary. We hire Sean Rice, who's the English teacher down there. That's who we cover her salary. Um, Bettendorf covers the science teacher and North Scott does the social studies. And like I said, we share the math one. We also have a, um, a school, uh, resource or therapist down there as well that we partner with AEA. So they're with us plus this AEA. Um, so there are just a lot of great supports that the kids do a phenomenal job. And our number one goal is to see them graduate. I mean, it truly is, and they go down there, they have some great success. We try to incorporate the students into anything that we have, you know, for PTA reflections. Sean is phenomenal at getting the students from Edison to be a part of our reflections program. So it's just a good situation. And, um, so you look at our total expenses for next year, taking Sean's salary into place, we pay about $150,000, um, for Edison Academy for our piece of that for the year. So again, great program, something we watch, but as Mike said, we have a lot of supports in school that are helping kids be successful, um, prior to going to Edison.
If they're at Edison Academy, can they participate in the extra, extra activities through our high school?
Yes, they can.
Yes, absolutely. As a matter of fact, um, the students, uh, they, they have their four core areas they're taking down there. But if they want to come back to their local high schools for art, they come back for art, welding, they come back in that. They know I'm a, I'm a strong one in pushing for enrolling in a Scott class and a CTE area. I said, you tell me what it is, with everything from cosmetology to welding to automotive to criminal justice. I mean, you name it. It's, it's trying to encourage them to do that. And it all comes, that staff down there is passionate for those kids and they will not find a, a stronger advocate, um, for the kids they serve down there. So I can't say enough about them.
Have you ever seen, um, North Scott or Bettendorf need additional seats?
You know, North Scott had a while where they were pretty close, but they've kind of come down a little bit as well. Um, I'd say Bettendorf probably has the highest number of students down there right now. We have not reached our 60, I think it's 60s of the allotment, I think we put all three together.
75.
75.
70.
I thought it was 30, 2020 and.
That's how you get to those percentages, like 2020, 30.
Okay.
But I.
2020, 30.
Get 2020, 30, and they've not, because all three schools have been pretty, placing services in their building to keep the kids in there as much as possible until they're at a spot where it still isn't working and.
And there, it's junior seniors occasionally, maybe a second semester sophomore occasionally, but usually junior seniors.
Since such majority of the salary of 40% is coming from Bettendorf, I assume the benefits of them, things are all administered through them?
Correct, yes.
And then what I've always wondered, when it comes to shared employees, we don't have a lot, but we do have some. Uh, who takes care of evaluations of the individuals who work in that capacity? What kind of a sage does Artis Ratav versus Bettendorf versus North Scott?
Yep. Another example would be our, uh, one of our orchestra teachers. Um, Sarah Colerone is shared between the two. So basically her contract runs through Bettendorf, um, but then we pay back a certain cost of that. Um, she typically will do her professional development through Bettendorf. Maybe sometimes thus, depending upon what it looks like and what the focus area is. Um, with any evaluations, yes, we work in partnership with them and stay in communication with them. But they offer the contract through them. And that's, we couldn't do, just that they took it on.
And the evaluations of the teachers, so in this particular instance, Sean is an employee of Posit Valley and so an administrator goes down and does her evaluation, which on time I did that.
I believe it.
Bettendorf handles theirs and North Scott is, uh, Kristy Ames.
Okay.
By the way, I did that, I was around North Scott, so.
And I believe Adam is the one that works with Edison.
Okay, got it.
And she participates in our professional learning. So when our teachers are, um, you know, doing, uh, professional learning, professional development days, Sean participates? She just did last year.
Yep, she did, but just wants to train.
Great. Any other questions regarding the Edison Academy allocation of expenses? If not, I'll take a motion.
I would the board approve the allocation of Edison Academy expenses as presented.
Motion, Ms. Kunkel, seconded by Ms. Brockman, that the board approve the allocation of Edison Academy expenses as presented. Roll call vote please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Ms. Brockman?
Yes.
Ms. Haskins?
Yes.
Ms. Kunkel? Director Wesley?
Yes. Our next item is a 2020, 2022 legislative priority. Uh, Mr. Struth?
So as we just finished legislative session, we always look ahead to, um, the start of the school year and we look at what our 2020, 22 legislative sessions will be ideas that we give to Iowa School Board Association. Tonight is really the first night to have this conversation, or at least to start looking at what is out there available for us. Um, and they are due by our August 11th meeting is when we have to, need to have these turned into IASB. So really tonight, I just want to kind of walk you through some things to think about. We'll continue to have these on our next couple of gen, uh, board meetings. And July 12th, we'll have Representative Canoyer and Representative Moore coming to our meetings to recap the 2021 legislative session, but also let them hear what our goals are and then what their goals might be moving forward also. So that'll take place in Jan, uh, July 12th. So in your packet, there are two documents. One is really, if you went to the second one, it is everything combined in there. But when you go through, I'd encourage you to read that longer one. Um, it just talks about the beliefs of IASBs and kind of what their longstanding, um, platforms or ideas and things that they try to make sure that they are looking at for kids across the state of Iowa from a school board standpoint. The second one would be the resolutions, which are more specific legislative proposals, um, that can change from year to year. So when you look at, you know, this pages, on pages 17, 18, you'll see the IASB, um, priorities from this last school year, which were preschool, mental health, school funding and SSA. That was kind of their focus areas this past year. Um, in your newsletter, you have what we focused on last year was funding priority and also mental health priority. So we can look at those two again and think about, do those want to be the ones we pursue for next year? Or is there something different? Um, it's something different being looking at the 2021 list that IASB had available or we can come up for something different also. But as you look at those legislative priorities, there are some pretty good areas in terms of like preschool, early literacy, mental health, the dropout at risk that we have talked about for a number of years, special education funding from a state and federal landscape. Um, and then SSA, the supplemental state aid. Those are all things that we can be thinking about between now and August as to what we might want to put as our potential priorities for this upcoming year. So really tonight, it's not really discuss these, it's more for you to kind of start thinking ahead um, with our vision in front of us, look through what we've done in the past, what is there? And so we can start having discussions in future board meetings about what our priorities might be for our district. Remember that IASB, IASB would typically say no more than four, maybe a couple. And if you can write them in together, that is helpful because these are things that they will work with legislators then next year in 2022, January of 2022, to move these things forward, um, in the legislative session. So again, as districts try to come together, also look at some common, um, priorities there too.
Great. So just kind of keep in mind that, I mean, both of those documents are really good summary of IASB, IASBs, um, sort of roadmap when it comes to legislative resolutions. I think, how many times I've been on the board so far, for at least seven years, we've always had supplemental state aid as at least one of them. That's been there every single year. Uh, we, it was interesting, I remember when mental health came up, came, came into being maybe about two or three years ago, that was just a new one and, and we've come significant, a significant way in mental health when it comes to, um, our school system. So if you think as though doing this is not really going to lead to anything, it really does because at least in my tenure here, we've seen mental health go from not even being on the table to having legislation passed to help with mental health. So these really are important. So we really need to kind of regroup and see what we think is best. And I agree, just a couple of them, two to three at most. Uh, then the other thing to think about is who wants to be our delegate to the, um, to the delegation assembly, which occurs the day before our IASB meeting in November. So if you guys can look at your calendars, if people are interested, it certainly would be, um, nice if, um, somebody other than me wants to participate because it is really, it, it's a good experience and it's a nice learning experience and you get to meet with other, uh, board members and, uh, just talk about what your shared mentality is on the school system in our state, so.
You know, Dr. Wesley brought up mental health, I'm going to give you an update on mental health. Um, uh, from a funding standpoint, this is really, it's the success of legislation, what's been going on. You know, last year we struggled, the, the find therapist, number one, is very difficult. The number of therapists in the area is very limited. So you take like a Vera French or Bethany, they have a hard time finding therapists in, for a school-based setting. Um, we have worked with, um, a number of therapists here that over the course of the, well, last spring and now the start of the school year, we will have six school-based therapists next year. Um, six and seven of our buildings, which is great, actually moving to eight now, I guess, eight buildings in the fall. But just an example, we basically pay each school-based therapist $6,000 for the year is all that we have to pay them, of which with, when you read about legislating about flexible spending, flexible opportunities, we can use Title IV funds for that, which offsets about $10,000 there. And then in addition, um, Scott County DCAT or Scott County Kids is also giving us another $5,000. So of our therapists, we're able to offset $15,000 from flexible, you know, or grant opportunities. So you're right, there is money starting to come available for mental health, which has been great for our kids, especially looking at coming off this last year, that could be a real asset for us moving forward. So some good things there, we may take that off as one of our priorities, but something else could definitely replace mental health.
Right. All right, there's no motion on that. So the last is, um, an executive session, um, that we will be talking about. So, uh, it's personnel. So thank you all for coming, uh, but we are going to move into an executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you.